Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. These meetings are televised on Milford TV and we are live, so with that I will open the meeting and entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting on February 20th, 2024.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion by Babe to approve the minutes of 2:20 24. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion, hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Opposed, that's unanimous at three. We only have three members tonight. As you all are aware, we've only had four since recently and Chris Wilson was, is not able to attend tonight, he had something else that was going on, so we do have a bigger panel here tonight. Today is our first meeting of the Joint Ad hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee meeting. And we'll go over, as we said in our last meeting, we started the process, the members from MAPC staff had gone on a bus tour with us a few weeks ago, and they're here tonight more as an introduction of people that are here and also to go through what the plan is and how they plan to move forward. So with that, I think we'll introduce the people at the head table first and then you guys can introduce yourselves. So Liz, why don't you start?
Elizabeth Minini, Town Engineer.
Rick Valani, Town Administrator.
Babe Minini, Planning Board Member.
Chris Moore, Finance Committee Member.
Joe Marias, also Planning Board.
Joe Caligione, Planning Board.
Paul Masakelli, Select Board Member.
Larry Duncan, Town Planner.
Josh Fiala, Principal Planner and Land Use Manager at MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Courtney Lewis, Senior Planner at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
With that, I'll turn it over to you guys and if we can go through your presentation.
Thank you very much and thank you for taking the time, both Planning Board and Ad Hoc Committee for being with us this evening. So we are kicking off the comprehensive plan process this evening. We did want to just start to gain rapport with you all and introduce ourselves, but also go through the process. Tonight, our agenda is pretty straightforward. We'll give an overview of the comp plan itself, talk about, Milford today just have some initial snapshot of some of the data that we're gathering as an illustration of the work that we're doing presently, and then talk about community engagement, which will be an important part of our process and plan, and get a little feedback from you all on that, and then talk about the immediate next steps as well. So that's effectively what we want to capture this evening, maybe a few moments where we're asking for feedback from the committee this evening as well. Just to start with the introduction, you've all introduced yourselves, thank you very much, it's great to make your acquaintance. On our side of the table, if you're not familiar with MAPC, so here's Milford, of course, and you're in the MAPC region, which is roughly within the 495 Belt, you're just on the edge of that region actually, but this is the Greater Boston Region. We are the regional planning authority for the Greater Boston Region and provide technical planning assistance to cities and towns within that region, 101 cities and towns, and we provide a variety of services. I think we align very well with comprehensive plans and master plans, townwide planning processes. We have over 100 planning staff in our agency that cover all the disciplines required and needed for a comprehensive planning process. So we have a really full suite of staff working on the process. You can see the region in a little bit different depiction, it's divided into subregions which engage with each other and sort of enhance municipal collaboration as well within the region. So we're happy to be here with you all in Milford. All that said, I would like to make the point that even though we're the regional plan agency, this is Milford's comp plan, we don't bring an agenda or a certain lens, we're really here through this process to discover the town's vision and the town's goals and strategies, and we'll be drafting the plan really as your hand in putting that together and providing our expertise, but not necessarily providing our approach, it's your town's plan. As I mentioned, we have a full team working with us, and you can see some of those faces, I think many of these, Paul and Joe were gracious enough to spend their time a couple weeks ago on a town tour. Many of these staff joined us on a shuttle bus, which took us around, I think it was quoted, 40 miles that we toured around the town, and it was great. Courtney and I recognized a lot of the territory as we came in this evening, so it's really effective to get us on the ground knowledge. We have staff in all of the disciplines, as I mentioned, economic development, transportation, land use, open space, community facilities and services, housing, cultural and historical resources, and then also supporting disciplines such as data analysis, data services, community engagement specialists, and Courtney and I will be managing this team internally and providing leadership throughout the process and are happy to do so. You'll see, I think, as we, as the process unfolds, at various meetings, we'll have a large crew, in some meetings it'll just be Courtney and I, but we'll, as the process continues, as we need a specialist or planner at a certain meeting, you'll see them and you'll probably throughout the process interact with most of this team in a variety of ways. So just in terms of the process and roles, we expect that this ad hoc committee will convene likely about on a monthly basis, maybe not every month as the process goes on, but likely it will round out to about once a month. You'll be providing feedback on the plan, guiding us through the process, letting us know if, you know, what your opinions are, both about the content but also about the process itself, and we will invite your sort of guidance to keep us from going astray along the way. And hopefully, I think, the good thing about the composition of the committee in terms of its leadership, representing town boards, the planning board primarily, this is, the comprehensive plan is a planning board process, will ultimately be adopted by the planning board, so it's good to have buy-in in a very detailed manner from the planning board and from town leadership as we go along. We're hopeful that as we go through this, you know, year or more process, that we build support for the types of goals and strategies and ultimately implementation actions that this plan will be putting forward, and I think with the leadership involved in this ad hoc committee, we can expect that you all be sort of very knowledgeable of the plan and its process and how we got there in the end. On our side, we're basically doing everything else, so we're providing the technical assistance, providing all the expert knowledge and planning in the various fields as discussed, facilitating and establishing and sort of preparing for any of the engagement opportunities and meetings along the way, and we'll, where we need your assistance in one of those meetings, we'll make that clear and make clear the expectations. So if you're supposed to be present to just be there and show support for that meeting or be present to help us maybe take notes or facilitate a conversation, we'll make clear what that expectation is and well in advance so that you can be a part of that. And we'll be carrying out outreach, our outreach staff members have already begun engaging with various aspects of the community and will be, one of our first deliverables for you, which we'll talk about this evening in a little more detail later, is a community engagement plan, which will talk about the ways that we plan to engage and we'll invite your feedback on that as well. And then ultimately, we'll be the party that puts the plan together, puts all the content that's developed through the process into a plan document, that's ultimately the town's document. So pass it over to Courtney now, who'll give you an overview of the work plan and the scope, just to walk you through that, get us on the same page.
So a comprehensive plan, also known as a master plan, has a cited definition in Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81D. A comprehensive plan is described as a plan that includes a purpose statement, text, maps, illustrations, and other forms of communication. It is intended to be, to help be a decision-making guide regarding physical development and future land use within municipalities. There are also specific components of the plan which are specified, which include goals and/or a policy statement, land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, public facilities and services, transportation, which includes circulation throughout the town, and then also an implementation guide or a plan for implementation. So how we approach these types of plans at MAPC, we strive to create a holistic, community-based vision for Milford and that looks into the future. We start by gathering a series of guiding principles or values for the town based on feedback that we hear, both from leadership but also from the public. We use that information to start to draft a vision statement, and from that vision statement, we create goals that start to get at how that vision comes to be. We continue to drill down by citing specific strategies and actions for achieving those goals, and all of that information is directly aligned with the town's existing plans, policies, and previous planning efforts. This just includes a short, an outline of how the plan document will be outlined and the chapters included, which I previously mentioned. And this graphic starts to get at the approach that I just described, where we start with a vision statement and then we drill down and provide information on each of the planned topic areas. From that point, we create a set of goals for each section, but also ensure that they support and complement one another, and then we include strategies and specific actions on how to achieve those goals, which are fed into the implementation plan. We start by highlighting any issues in the community, both from residents as well as from a municipal or governing standpoint, and then we work with the town to come up with specific solutions to those issues, and then through the series of goals, strategies, and implementation plan, provide a roadmap on how to achieve the vision. As Josh mentioned, we, our data services team is working with the town's GIS contractor to obtain data. We're also reviewing previous planning efforts and studies because we want to take a data-driven approach to create a baseline of existing conditions. We'll then test those assumptions or those key findings and invite the public to the conversation to help guide the process. This will be a collaborative approach with drafting content, we'll provide drafts to the committee beforehand to review and provide feedback on, we'll also share content with the public in order to gather feedback and support on various goals and actions throughout the planning process. We've broken the scope of work into two major phases. In Phase One, we'll focus on collecting existing conditions and also the visioning with the committee as well as the public, and that will establish the foundation in which we start to work from. We'll review any existing land use patterns, any community issues, and then based on that information, we'll start to draft a vision and develop some of the initial drafts of the plan that will be tested both with the committee as well as the public, and then use feedback gathered to define the vision and which will eventually drive or provide direction for the plan. And then in Phase Two, it's focused primarily on goal setting and coming up with ways to execute those goals as defined in the implementation plan. We start with creating draft recommendations, refining those recommendations both with the committee and the public as a whole, and then based on feedback that we've gathered, we define specific strategies and actions to achieve, based on those recommendations, and that information, along with the existing conditions, information will be used to start to compile the full plan. We also, as I mentioned, not only ensure that there are goals for each topic area, but we also look at cross-cutting themes in the way that goals and recommendations support different aspects of the plan. We provide a summarized, an executive summary, which hits many of the key points of the plan upfront, and then we also provide summaries of the community forums and the engagement points throughout the process. We, once we've gotten a complete draft, we release that to the public for public comment, and then after we've revised and edited the draft, it's then put to a vote to be, for the final plan to be approved. So this graphic just shows the timeline and how some of those tasks are laid out throughout the, throughout 2024 and 2025. There are also a series of points of engagement. We have two community workshops outlined here, as well as opportunities for together public comment through surveys, and our community engagement team will also be looking for opportunities to be here in person and engage with residents to gather input, but also to encourage residents to come out to the forums and to participate and engage with some of the activities and exercises that we propose. We're looking to have everything wrapped up in spring of 2025. There may be a few things that throughout the process will have to be modified or adjusted slightly based on timing and scheduling, but generally, this is the way that we'd like the process to unfold. I'm going to hand it back to Josh.
Thanks, Courtney. Any questions about any of the process or any items that were covered so far?
Yeah, the only thing I was going to ask you, Courtney, the, getting the public their information and whatnot, now that'll be through an invitation, let's say through social media or through invitation some way, instead of just going up to people at random and asking them, right?
Right, so we are, what we have in the works is a community engagement plan, which will provide a detailed approach, a detailed and strategic approach to disseminating information and which, how to engage and reach out to different segments of the town's population.
Sure, so that way you get an overview of the town itself instead of just a certain segment of it.
Right, and as much as possible, one of the things we'll start to talk about this evening is trying to plug into your existing communication networks, leveraging like information that goes out to the school population, for example, is a great way to touch a bunch of households. So we can strategically use outreach for the master plan or comp plan, excuse me, for efforts like that.
Okay, good, thank you.
We just want to touch a little bit on Milford today, this is a snapshot of some of the initial findings. First, we just want to give photographic evidence of this tour, which we've mentioned, here we all are. This is post-tour and you can see we're all still smiling, so it's a good enough day. So it was very helpful to be here in person. In addition, back at the office, we're doing a bunch of data gathering and data analysis, both spatial analysis, mapping, that we'll have a few examples of, but also census data and other data sources, just basically collecting everything we can about the town and giving you all an up-to-date snapshot of where all that stands. We're also reviewing past plans, there's a rich inventory of past plans, which we're reviewing, mining for information, building upon, so that we'd be consistent with it as we think about where the town's headed next. I will mention the 2003 comprehensive plan is actually a solid foundation. One of the things that were, a lot's changed since 2003, of course, but one of the things that we're looking at, given that that was a pretty solid comp plan, is making sure that at least we're giving you an update of everything that was included in terms of data, maps and all that, and so you'd have a nice reference point from 2003 to 2024. And so that's one of our ambitions, we've inventoried what was in the plan previously and trying to tick off those items as we move along. We also, we need, Larry, this will be something we talked to you about soon, but would like to have conversations with municipal leadership, various board and committee chairs or heads and department leads, just so we can have those conversations, get a feel for what's most important and what's on people's radar in the day-to-day governance and workings of the town. We'll have an initial conversation about now, in this month of March, hopefully is where we'd like that to land, and then after we get through a point where we have goals and strategies, we'll revisit those conversations so we can check in with those same folks and make sure that the types of recommendations that we're providing are actually helpful to that day-to-day operation, work of the town, and also do a little bit of ground-truthing in terms of actions that we're starting to propose, because you all, people who are doing this in the day-to-day work, we might have a great idea, but then they could say, you know, tried that two years ago, didn't work, like go, head in a different direction. So that's a helpful ground-truthing as we go through the process as well. So just a few stats and statistics about the town, it's a sizable population, I would say, a regional center in many ways, also a job center with its connections along 495. This is quite a few jobs and businesses, small businesses in the town. The town has been seeing population growth over the last decade or more, and that growth in general, as a general trend, I would say, is diversifying the population from what you see, still 76% white, but I think that much of the growth is occurring in the other multiracial categories, 17% today, and the Hispanic and Latino categories of 11% or so, and that 30,000 total residents. There are just under 12,000 housing units, there's, we were impressed actually in the town tour at the variety of housing types that the town has, there's a variety of different single-family home, you know, less dense to higher density in the downtown, to a variety of apartment sort of complexes and the 40Bs, those types of approaches. That, I think, shows up in what you see in terms of the housing tenure, so 70% owner and almost 30% renter, that's probably in about alignment with what you see across the Commonwealth. Many, many communities are more skewed towards ownership, so it's good to see that you have that balance with renting. The median household income is, I would say, reflects more of a working-class population potentially that we need to dig into in terms of the data. This is about in line with the median household income across the Commonwealth, but lower than what we see in some of the other communities within the Greater Boston Region. 25% of the homeowner population is cost-burdened, meaning cost-burdened is spending more than a third of your income on housing costs, and you see that number increases to almost half of renters find themselves in that situation, which is an interesting counterpoint and difference. That's not unusual to see that difference between owners and renters. So this is just a snapshot of the types of data that we'll be digging into and really trying to unearth the patterns and trends and build some thoughts in terms of what types of recommendations could help these data figures. We're also doing spatial mapping, you see here just a more general map of the town. I think there's also a great open space network, I think we saw on the town tour, and that shows up here on the townwide map. Excellent town facilities, as far as we can tell, on First Pass as well. Notable that there's three town pools, I'm not sure if that happens anywhere else, I've seen three town pools, but that's something that's remarkable. You see the mode of travel that most people take in terms of commute here, and it's predominantly driving around alone, 74%, but you see also, this is data which was not totally clear of the pandemic for 2021, but is a little bit post-pandemic, so you see a little bit more, 10% in that WFH, which is work from home, and then you see also some carpooling and not as much transit, there's not a direct transit connection. Land use is another important category that we're tracking and mapping in this effort, and we'll probably have the ability, I think, with the previous comp plan and data, to do some comparison and trends in terms of how the land uses has evolved from the 2003 comp plan. You can see here that a lot of commercial and non-residential activity around the highway, the 495 Belt, of course, and the state-numbered routes, so where you would expect that type of activity, and then everything else that you see in yellow is the residential activity, which is the most predominant land use, but you can see a substantial amount of the other color tones, the reds and the purples and blues, which are commercial and industrial activity on those corridors. And I would say also, one thing to note, which we saw on the tour as well, and you see centered here, and just about centered in the map, if I can find my red, is the historic downtown, and there's a substantial amount of small businesses and active Main Street, and I think really, I don't think we noticed hardly any vacancies at all, so it looks like very healthy downtown, and that will be a focus as well in our topics that Courtney went through, is a focus explicitly on the downtown. Zoning will also be a focus of our work, and Larry's pointed out to us already that some of these maps are out of date, so we're working with the GIS vendor to get these, get the data in alignment, but zoning will be something that will likely be the focus of many of our recommendations and outcomes of our work as we think about how the regulations of the land use are in alignment with the town's goals and how we can maybe make an impact positively on that, the comp plan and those recommendations. You can see here the same patterns that I pointed out in the land use plan, that a lot of the state route-numbered corridors in 495 is where you see the zoning districts of non-residential nature, and that's the reds and the purples. And then just a final map that I think reinforces those same points, and this is on housing density. You see a concentration of the housing density in the historic downtown, which is what you see kind of in the looking field of that area as well. which is what you see kind of in the looking field of that area as well. Houses closer together, multi-unit homes, historic homes that are of a higher density. And then you see that density fall off as you move to the outer corners of the town. And that's where you see the larger lots subdivisions, and the density just gets lesser and lesser as you get further from that historic core. So that's actually a pretty typical planning pattern. It's good to see that play out with a central denser core and then working out to less dense around the edges. Might, whatever just happened on the laptop, might have canceled my clicker, so maybe just advance this a little bit. So one of the, just initial conversations we wanted to have the committee reflect on this evening was just from, I know it was just a snapshot, we aren't getting too many details tonight, but see first if anything kind of surprises you about that initial snapshot. But we're also interested in just getting a feel from the committee if there are main issues that we should make sure that we're focusing on as we get all of this sort of wealth of data and analysis focused so that we can concentrate our efforts appropriately if there are things that you think should be on our radar.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to mention, too, is that snapshot that you gave us, just to let the individuals know who weren't on that little bus tour. When we went there, we did, we went over throughout the whole town, practically every residential area around, thanks to Joe. And we not only looked at that, we looked at the downtown area as well, industrial areas, commercial areas, our medical areas, just to get a big snapshot of what the town is about. So a lot of information that they gathered through that, again, it was not only 46 miles, it also lasted almost three hours. So that was a very detailed tour. And from there, that's how a lot of this information would be coming from. But just to let you know, too, is hopefully by the beginning of this next fiscal year, we'll be having our own economic development director to also help out as well with this project, which I think is very long overdue for a town this size and whatnot. And hopefully we could focus a little bit more on the downtown. I know it's vibrant where a lot of the commercial spaces are occupied and rented and whatnot, but maybe a way to improve it a little better as well, you know, so it's more or less, a little more pleasing to the eye as well, and maybe to get other tenants in there that could more or less be helpful to the downtown as well. One of the things I was going to ask, too, was the, I think Joe pointed out, too, where the majority of our vacant land, how we don't have as much anymore, like it's like 90 some odd percent developed, you know. So that's something that, you know, really is an issue with us right now. It's more or less the industrial part, the downtown part. And the areas like, for instance, like we mentioned before that I showed you very briefly, but was the Ocha Rubber area, which was down on the depot and Central Street area, which has been vacant for about a good seven years. And hopefully we come up with a plan with that and, you know, more or less convey that to the present owners and see what's going to happen with that. Because like I said, it's been semi-blighted for the past seven years. It's been, you know, demolished, I believe in 2017. And that's something that we'd like to go, just to improve the aesthetics of that area as well, where the zoning was also changed just recently as well.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Anyway, thank you, too, for a great job that both of you have done. It's a very complex issue in a project that we're in, and you explained it very, very well, very detailed and easy to understand, especially for someone like me who's very new at this. Thank you.
Who else? I mean, I think I probably expressed my issues and concerns as part of the bus tour that, you know, in talking about the downtown, certainly the, for those buildings that are multi-story, how we get, or is there a way to improve tenancy in the upper stories? Because we know that those are somewhat light. The fact that we're, you know, 90 to 95% built out, probably closer to 95, really. But, so to me, the zoning issues come down to, how do we, how do we massage our existing zoning to allow for higher and better usages going forward? Because we're, you know, shortly we'll be in an area where new build won't be supplying the town with additional tax dollars on a year-to-year basis unless we, unless we figure out a higher and better usage that the town can collect more taxes on, because we're not going to be, we're not going to be building new things and collecting higher taxes. So those are the priorities, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of what I'd like to see coming out of it. Certainly, at least a roadmap to that.
That's great.
I think we need to focus somewhat on the, on the stats. That data is from 2021. I'd like to, you know, looking at the, I know you touched upon it, demographics. I mean, looking, saying that 79% is white and the rest of it is into one or two buckets. See if we could break it up a little bit, break it out. And I think that would be helpful. And it'll, of course, include everyone in this charter. I, too, am very concerned about open space, conservation land. When this thing is done, I'd like to see some type of a process where we actually go through approval processes of the remaining 5% of land that we have so that the townspeople can decide what the best use of that land is. That's kind of all I got.
Thank you.
For those members, I know the planning board members, we were all here and talking about part of the process, and I may be stealing some of your thunder here or not, but what the planning board thought would be the best process, at least to an extent, moving forward, and it really started as part of this meeting, is that for the ad hoc meetings, we would try to schedule those as, on the same night as the planning board meeting. It would be the first item of agenda on our meeting. And we try to get the other ad hoc members in and out of here, but to try to do it on those nights as we move forward. And, again, the, we'll determine as we move forward whether everybody needs to be here or not on any particular meeting. There are certain, some meetings where I would assume that there may not be a need for certain members to be here or not. But that's the plan, at least moving forward. And depending on whether the consultant feels they need to have certain people or not, we can make a decision and let you know. Certainly, you're always welcome to every meeting that we have, but, you know, we'll try to also keep it to a minimum. I know people have other things to do as well. So that was the intent as to how we move forward. We'll be using planning board, one of the planning board meetings during the month to schedule meetings.
We just had one, one final section, which Courtney's going to walk us through in terms of community engagement, which I think will get to the point Joey made about being inclusive in this process.
So as Josh mentioned, engagement is going to be a huge component of the planning process. We're hoping to have a, to be innovative and creative in our approach to engaging with the community by providing several opportunities and different ways to, for the public to provide feedback, which will be used to help shape the overall plan. We want to approach this by having a continuous cycle of, or a full circle of communication, basically having a feedback loop. So not only disseminating information and gathering that, but also sharing what we heard and our interpretation of that information back with the public in a responsible and timely manner, and providing summaries to the public as well as the committee, ensuring that any information that we share in our approach is accessible and transparent. So making sure that people of all abilities is able to access information and ensuring that we're not using
I tried.
planning terminology, that the information is digestible and easily understood. And then also just being flexible in our approach. You know, we may try a few strategies or approaches to engaging with community members, and, but we may have to go back and modify the plan based on information that we gather during the events and also looking at who's showing up or who we haven't talked to, who isn't sitting at the table. As I mentioned, there will be several points of engagement throughout the entire process. We, we started out just trying to get a better feel for the town with the, with the tour. Will be, one of the things that we're hoping to gather is a list of stakeholders that we should be focused on trying to, to contact or enlist to help us get the word out about events for the plan. And then also, visioning is going to be a huge part of that as well. And as Justin mentioned, with drafting goals and also the strategies and actions to achieve those goals will have to be, you know, tested and supported by the community as well. Our community engagement team is currently working on a, an engagement plan that is unique to the town, that looks at different community organizations, that looks at demographics. And they'll probably propose several different approaches in the plan on how to engage with different age demographics as well as residents who speak different languages. So just, as I mentioned before, really striving to reach different segments and demographics of the other community. And so we had just a few questions in terms of gathering that list of initial community stakeholders. We were particularly interested in knowing if the town has a local merchants association, if there is a group or an organization that works directly with Spanish-speaking business owners or other Latin community, Latino communities, youth groups, business, businesses, as well as groups that focus on providing resources to parents and families.
I think, well, I mean, I think there's a few, you've already mentioned schools in terms of that. Unfortunately, Chris isn't here tonight. Chris is a school committee member as well as planning board member. But I would think you would definitely want to reach out to the school committee. Paul and Ricky may have input on others, but I would, I know in this community, I think the police department has a, has members that know the Latino community well and know people in that community that you certainly could reach out to, I would think. You know, as being a planning board member, we don't, we don't do it that much, but I, but I certainly think that the schools, the police department, perhaps the fire department. Ricky?
Chamber of Commerce, I know, also. We've, a couple of past projects that we've had, church leaders were another group that can help engage the Hispanic and Latino communities. So those would be two that I would think of off the top of my head.
Jack, I was going to say the same thing. We do have a chamber, a very active chamber, as a matter of fact. And the pastors of the various church groups, you know, be it Latino or Brazilian, have, you know, they gather a lot of ideas and insights from the parishioners as well. And at one of the services, you know, they could ask for more or less like some sort of a survey or something like that, that could also help them out. So you're getting at that from that particular sector.
Ricky can, can probably help you with a list of the pastors in the churches. Obviously, you know, there's the bigger churches, but there are quite a few and...
Yeah, there's a number of different denominations.
For that information, and then you can reach out to them.
And many a times, I've met with a couple of them. They want to be involved. They want to get involved and give their ideas as well, you know. So they'd be more or less happy to help you.
That's fantastic. We didn't, we're more on the planner's side, but our community engagement folks can't be held back. So they were actually in the community on Saturday, so I should give them credit for that. They attended the 26th Annual Family Fund and Disability Awareness Fair at Milford High School.
I was there, too.
Yeah, so they, we had, we had staff that were out there trying to rub elbows and make some connections out in the community, so it's good for them to do that.
On the stormwater side of things, we are actually in the process of, it's an MVP 2.0 grant. I don't know if you are familiar with it, but we have created the municipal half of the core team and in the next month or so are going to be recruiting community liaisons. So, you know, similar engagement process. So that's something, you know, maybe we can work together and share resources.
Yeah, we should definitely coordinate so that we don't double ask and kind of make sure that we're, it seems like we know what each other are doing. So that's, that's great. What about interpretation in the town? Is that, in terms of preparing ourselves for appropriate outreach and engagement? Should we, do we need an interpretation at meetings or certain meetings? Or are there any interpretation protocols that you all practices that you have?
Are you going to have stakeholder meetings where we're going to be in person? For example, upstairs at Town Hall? Might be a good idea, or those type of meetings to have people who can interpret?
Spanish and Portuguese. Haitian Creole, I think, is like a very close third.
The school has the Haitian interpreters.
Isa Kincaid was who gave me, she's in the schools, gave me the breakdown of languages.
Great. We'll get that data, too, but just want to see what protocols there may be.
Generally, most of the school information goes out in Spanish and in Portuguese.
Does the town have a, like a 311, like a text information system or sign boards or anything like that?
Yeah, we have a
Various areas.
Signboard system, sign boards that we put up, for example, at election time.
Election time, vaccinations and whatnot.
So we could make use of that. That might not be, that might be a very good idea.
Do we have any, should we have any targets or metrics that we're trying to meet? What's the best in terms of engagement that the town's ever done? Can we think we can do better? Is there a metric?
I don't have a metric, to be honest. I don't, we, we certainly didn't, I can't remember one in 2003, to put it that way. I mean, we, we did the best we could with what came, but I don't remember what the metrics were. I don't know if you guys have any for yours?
No.
So we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, we'll set a new benchmark.
There you go.
Also, food tends to bring people out. So if there's a local bakery or... Also, food tends to bring people out, so if there's a local bakery or vendor that may be able to, I don't, I don't know, that may draw a huge, a larger crowd, that may be a way to get more folks out.
You know what I was going to suggest too, excuse me, Mr. Chair? I was going to suggest that in May, we have celebrate Milford. And several thousand people attend that in one day. And they even have booths that you could set up to more or less have people come and you, whether you want to ask them any questions or engage in any conversation with them and whatnot, but it's a very well-attended event. I think at one time, Ricky, what did they have, like close to 5,000, 6,000?
Had some good numbers, maybe if you have some literature in different languages.
And again, speaking about food, they have food there too.
Well, because of the no-town park.
Oh, that's right too. Not going to have it this year.
Not going to have it this year.
Town park's going to be under major renovation, hopefully.
Well, how about down at the annex?
You got the pool that's going to be going. So both spots, unfortunately. Thank you, I forgot about that already. Sorry about that.
So there is no celebration?
No, there won't be this year, yeah. Hopefully the following year.
I didn't think of that.
Twenty-five, but it'll be probably too late for you then.
Yeah, there's also the Portuguese club as well, but again, that's something that's up to that committee if they want to attend that. But if that does come fruition, we'll let you know.
Yeah.
There are other areas in town, just not as large as the town park, but, you know, there are.
I'll check with my secretary.
As far as food goes, there's a number of, again, from Italian to Brazilian to Portuguese, there's a great, a great variety and a great, the food is fantastic on all of them, so.
That's good. If you, if any of you have additional ideas or thought about a specific event that we should have a presence at, just shoot us an email.
Sure.
And we'll make sure that we add that into the plan. Just to...
We are, now we mentioned about Milford, I believe we're still doing, Fourth of July, we'll have, we'll have something down at Plains Park.
Plains Park.
July 5th.
Yeah, July 5th. Whether that works out or not, but I think there's still a plan to do that. Usually, yeah. The Lions Club usually does, we usually end up doing a day in the park. At that event, we'll have a DJ and food available and there's usually a relatively decent turnout of people there.
That's great.
So that might be an opportunity.
Yeah, one of the things we've had a fair amount of success with in processes like this is having business cards for the project, where we just refer people to a website or a survey and go to an event like this and circulate business cards and we get a bunch of feedback.
That'd be good too.
Great.
Also, citizens of Milford have the cleanup day.
In April.
In April, and that's well-attended by volunteers cleaning up the town.
Well, I'm aware of the time and I know that you want this to be a concise intro to the real planning board work afterwards, but we just want to touch, we've gone through this, Courtney went through this in detail, and I refer you to it as, we'll try to keep pace with this, and I know there's a lot of information in that diagram. But in terms of immediate next steps, we will, I think that potentially the next meeting with you all will be on April 2nd, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, for the ad hoc committee members, just so you realize, that is election, town election night. So the plan right now, the planning board, I think we're planning on having our meeting or we may have a somewhat limited meeting that night to allow for the ad hoc meeting, but obviously, I don't know who's, I don't know whether anybody's running that it's going to affect them or not. I mean, I, but just so you're all aware that that is town election night.
Sure.
But the plan is to still have a, some form of planning board meeting that night, so that's why we're on April 2nd.
Great. And one of the immediate tests we're also working on behind the scenes is getting a project website up and running. So as we do outreach and get that rolling, we can have a repository of information that people can go to and refer to throughout the process. And we'll put these types of presentations, the presentation we shared this evening will be up on the website once we get it operating. And we will sort of host and service that throughout the process, so the town doesn't have to worry about that. And we'll have it consistent, sort of come up with a short URL that's easy to get to and remember, so that'll be part of it.
Well, IT is currently updating the town's website, so it'll be new and improved, hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And we'll be able to put a link on that to your site.
That's great. Excellent. Yeah, once we get the link established, we'll share that and you can get that up on the town website as well. I think that in general, if you have the opportunities in your boards committees, day-to-day work, meetings with residents, et cetera, just start to spread the word about that there's a comp plan underway and hopefully the residents and others will be hearing about it as the process unfolds. And Larry, as we mentioned, will be reaching out about this municipal day so we can start a series of interviews and such. And happy to do that however is most convenient, either we're happy to do it in person, happy to do it by Zoom, whatever works for people. If there's, one of the things we've done in the past in other communities is if there's like a department head meeting that happens monthly, we could come and piggyback on that or no such thing.
We'll do one for this, especially if we can do it by Zoom.
Yeah.
Helpful.
We'll coordinate with you and figure out the best way to do that. Thank you all very much for taking the time. Any other parting thoughts or questions?
Well, if anybody comes up with suggestions on any of this stuff, email me and then I can disseminate it to everybody at the same time and we can kind of keep track of it. And that way Josh will be able to keep track as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. We're really excited about this presentation. Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks to the non-planning board ad hoc committee members for showing up tonight.
Thank you for having us. See you in April.
Yep. If not before.
If not before.
Right.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, I probably should have closed that first, huh?
You would feel that real quick.
Yeah, it wouldn't make it too fast.
Yeah, of course.
I'm usually the loudest one in the room. I was like, why is this one...
It's good to see you.
We got no 81Ps tonight. We have the traffic plan peer review for Zero East Main Street. Obviously, this is the traffic plan for the warehousing at the, near the Holliston line. We do have a letter from the applicant saying that they reviewed the proposal and they have no issues with it. So just wanted to go through with it, members from the board, if they have any issues with it or concerns. I know I had mentioned one to Liz, but I think it was minor in that they had given time for an additional public hearing, which I don't think they're going to need. I just wanted to make sure that they were planning on at least one full set of reviews of the applicant's traffic plans and then a second review once the applicant makes changes if there are any from the plans. If that's in here, for, to try to expedite the process, I felt we could go ahead with the number as the applicant is willing to do that. And if they don't end up with a second public hearing, that money would be given back to the applicant. Those are my only comments on it.
I want you to scope myself, see if you can envelop everything.
It does include follow-up comments and recommendations.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion that we approve the scope of work and cost for the, to be paid by the applicant for the traffic study review for Zero East Main Street.
Okay. I'll make a recommendation.
Motion by Joe to approve the scope and cost for the traffic review.
Oh, thanks.
Seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at three. So you can go ahead and reach out to them, Liz and Larry, and have them start doing the work.
We just had one comment.
Oh, yeah, what? Okay.
Tim Hayes of Bowler with the applicant here. So we understand from the letter that they'll be able to provide their initial comments in advance of the April 16th hearing, which is fine by us. And we understand from the last hearing that we're actually scheduled to be on the 319 hearing for our next, you know, sit in front of you guys. We would like to request a continuance to the April 16th hearing if that was okay with the board.
Yeah, I don't want to send a, yeah, we probably ought to get it in writing, but yeah, you could, you could do it. Just so you're aware that the April 16th public hearing already has four public hearings, so you're not going to be on for 20 to 30 minutes.
Why don't you send us a letter and we can, you know, for our next meeting is going to be the second and we can deal with it then, but assume that it's, you know, we can, because we just need, we'd like a letter in our folder, but we can just...
So that's directed Larry, is that...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, we just, we didn't need to be bringing up 319 if you want.
Right. No, that makes more sense, because then we just continue it anyways. Even if we went over some of the articles, we'd still have to go back, so it'll make it much easier to try to make sure everything is together.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, because you can't really do it tonight because the public hearing isn't open.
Right.
We're not discussing the public hearing case, we're discussing the peer review estimate.
Yeah, that's fine, so we can come back and continue.
Yeah, you can just send us a letter at that point to extend it to the meeting and ask us to put it on that agenda and you don't have to even come to that next one with the letter. I mean, you just need to send that in so it's in the file.
Appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
It wasn't on the agenda as a public hearing. You can't do that.
Thanks, Larry.
Yep, see you.
Next item is the continued amended site plan for 146 South Main Street, New York Capital Investment Group LLC. So effectively for, for board members, if you, this is the car wash, we had asked them to do a traffic impact report, which they have provided. I know, I think we had, had everything else been addressed at the last one, the board members, remember? Everything else had been closed off?
Yep.
So it was completed. So this is the last thing that we had on our agenda, I think. I think the town engineer had a couple of comments on the report. And if you want to just go over those, Liz or the board.
So, so one of my concerns, and this is partially due to a change in ITE, is the pass-by percentage. It looks like you're still using, you're using the pass-by percentage for a gasoline service station and that doesn't seem applicable to me.
If I might answer, what I did was I looked at the rates for the gasoline, there's going to be some pass-by clearly.
Obviously.
So what I did was...
I don't know that it's that high, that's...
I found what I thought was the closest sort of land use, which was a gas station, and the rates that were in the IT book for the gas station were 63% for the AM, 57% for the PM, and 49% for the Saturday. So I downscaled it down to 40%. So I took what was in IT for the service station, used engineering judgment to reduce it.
If I may too. I know, Liz, you had that, because previously, I think I submitted the, the analysis was based on the 10th edition.
Right.
The 10th edition did have some, but the 11th edition, I believe, does not have any...
The 11th edition does not have it.
Does not have it.
For a car wash.
So we took the one from the gas station and as being conservative, he took a lower number just to be on the safe side. And again, you can see, I mean, the numbers were for the, again...
Even if I hadn't taken any pass-by reduction, the trip generation worked out to be no more than 100 vehicle trips in an hour, which is the guideline on when you do, whether you do a traffic impact study or not.
And to that point, I wish you had just left it as not taking the pass-by, because more so, it just, I feel pretty strongly that a car wash and a service station have very different pass-by usage. So that's, that was the, that was the piece that I was, and I was a little confused about the, you used the self-service car wash in the daily?
Right, and that is, I wanted to have a daily number and the IT book doesn't have a daily number for a tunnel-type car wash. So we looked at the self-service car wash number and in addition, we consulted with the applicant, who said on a busy day, no more than 500 customers, a more typical day is 200 customers. So 200 customers would equal 400 trips, 779 would be kind of double that. So we use judgment there again. And our analysis is based on the peak hour numbers. The daily numbers are more for illustrative purposes. One other thing, getting back to the pass-by percentage, if you look at the numbers that we took for pass-by, I'll look at the busier peak hour, we came up with 32 pass-by trips. If we were to reduce that number by half, there'd be 16 fewer pass-by trips. In other words, changing the pass-by rate doesn't really make that big of a difference.
Right, and I, that was a conversation that I had with the chairman prior to the meeting. I do understand that there's not going to be a big change and that it keeps it really under that 100, but I just don't, my concern, I guess, is setting a pattern. You know, this is not something that I want to, I don't, I feel, like I said, very strongly that it's not that high. I think I would be more comfortable with half, but, so I guess my preference would be if we could change it.
Change the number? Yeah, why not?
I understand it's not going to change the outcome.
What would you, I'm coming up with another number out here that I'd like to kind of talk to you about it, would 25% be reasonable to you? That was the old default pass-by rate that they used to use in Massachusetts.
We had talked about this before and maybe to ease where you are and where we're going. I don't think there's anything in here where the results such that it would change where we're going, but we want to, we as the board want to be comfortable as to what's in here and then having a comfortable number. But I don't think it's going to change and certainly I would recommend to the board that we approve this subject to, subject to Liz and traffic engineer working out a final thing. And then what I would like to make sure is in here is when you do that, whatever it comes out to, that that's specified in here based on, you know, the, whether it's in the IT or not, this number's not available in IT. We used it because the applicant has other locations that there are, for car wash areas that this is what he gets for, so that way we know where the information comes so that when something comes up later on, that we have to use this information for, we have some basis of reference for that, no matter who's here at that point in time. So, I mean, to me, I think that's where we are. So I don't, you know, I don't want to sit here and keep going around and around circles with you guys. I don't think that gets anybody anywhere, but I just want to get the report so that everybody's comfortable with it and everybody understands where those numbers came from. And also, I don't remember if the board have anything else, but that's where I would like to go with it.
I did send also, I sent you the information that was submitted by the, one of the abutters. Did you look at, one of the...
I did, but I think, Liz, if I may, I think at the last time we were here, I think we had an issue, we had, you had concerns with the sewer, first of all, so that's why it took us a while to get back to you, because we worked with the sewer department and we're good on that.
And obviously, you know, without having a sewer, you can't have a car wash, so we're
good on that. The traffic, you had a concern and even though we didn't think it was a, you know, but again, as for traffic study, we hired a traffic consultant and we did that. The drainage, you mentioned that we need to do...
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So I'll take a look at that and during the drainage design, because through conservation, I'll be working with you very closely and we can address whatever issue.
My concern is that he, they brought up this area over here.
Yeah.
About removing pavement. About removing pavement. That was one of the things that the abutter had mentioned, that, that was potentially excessive pavement, and I think that's probably a large enough change that I think this board would want to, would probably want to weigh in on top of whatever the Conservation Commission would, would say.
Well, yeah, I, I, I mean, someone may want pavement removed, but I don't know that there's any reason, at least I don't know if there's any reason that we're saying to remove that. I mean, we've had discussions about that, they've talked about going, using that access behind the building for various other possibilities. So to take it out, then put it back in, because someone's coming back, because, I mean, that pavement's been there for years, I...
That area is very important for the snow removal process, because during the, during the, when there were stores there, even that had to be plowed during, before Christmas, but after Christmas, that was a major area for the surge of the snow. And to take that, to take that away, you're going to have to put the snow either in a conservation area, which we don't want it, or pile it in, and take away parking spaces, which we definitely don't want. So absolutely not to take away that pavement is wrong.
Yeah. Well, I'll work with that.
Good enough. Yeah, no, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the thing, if that had to come out, this board would want to know about it. And as far as I'm concerned, I don't want to see it taken out, because, again, I, you know, I remember when we were talking about having access to the back of that building for, for an entrance, we needed to make sure that that turning radius was, was adequate or not, and it was questions as to whether it was or not. So I'm not going to tell somebody to take out pavement at this point in time.
And I'm not sure what's behind that. I think, Mr., I think the applicant is here, do you know anything about this running?
No, I don't, but I know, I know that they will count in at every parking space, so we cannot lose any spaces.
Yes, so that, I was there the other day in the plaza in Ace Hardware, I almost said Trivial. Ace Hardware is storing materials over in the area where they just put the, the propane tank, and I'm guessing that wasn't shown on the plan?
Nope.
So that's something that, you know, you're, you should definitely address with them, because...
We will.
It, it doesn't need to be done for this, but as far as...
Well, do we have a propane tank on us?
Yeah, the propane tank was done as a separate application of...
Yeah, that was before the car wash.
A year or two ago.
Yeah, yeah. Memories starting to go at this age, you know?
It's, well, you're younger than I am, but it was moved from where the car wash is going, to the eastern end.
From a drainage standpoint, I will tell you, I would like to see any unnecessary pavement removed.
Right, exactly, that's, normally, on the town, they say, we don't want pavement.
I'm not convinced that that's not necessary, that's, that's where I sort of am, without, without more...
Which, that's helpful for me when, when we are going through the conservation process.
Yep.
Pleasure to the board.
I make a motion, we approve it with the changing of the numbers, not changing the numbers...
Subject to, subject to approval of the traffic by the town engineer?
Yes.
So that way, we can at least close everything off?
So this is a motion to approve the situation?
Motion to approve the site plan?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, just subject to Liz getting, and the Traffic Engineer working, working on revising the report, as we talked about. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at three.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys, and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no worries. Oops, sorry.
Amended site plan, 79 Prospect Street.
John's got a updated plan, yep. The small versions were in there.
Yep.
Back at... Here's a, so, I can't remember whether that's attached to yours or not.
So again, this is continued site plan. I think the major questions the board had at the last one were making sure that the parking, in terms of number of T-chairs, and how that was going to function, and where they were going to park, and how that was going to work, and also the location of the dumpster, based on the fact that the dumpster that was shown would need to require, would need to require that it be moved, which it couldn't be, or would need to be enclosed in a fire-safe environment. So I think those were the outstanding issues, as I remember them.
Yes. So just for the record, John Federico with Perrier &amp; Hellman, and with me tonight is Daisy, our applicant. I apologize, I'm going to butcher your name on that one. As far as the dumpster comment goes, I've spoken with Daisy about her current trash usage and what she's expecting with the second floor. As of right now, we feel that the current dumpster situation we have with the rollouts is going to be sufficient enough, so we weren't going to be intending to propose any new dumpsters. That has been taken off the revised plan. And then, based on our most recent discussions with everything, I did add in two ballards in front of the play area, and then also added in the note for the signage regarding the drop-off, like a 10-minute max, so that we could utilize the extra stripe space there. And then, I wasn't too sure how the board might want it. I wasn't necessarily intending to have, like, labeling, like, for paint markings, but I did have a note added to the plan that space one, space six, and I believe it was space five, are to be employee parking, so that at least we had that portion squared away. Regarding overall teacher counts for everything, Daisy and I did have further discussions on that, and our total teacher count is going to be six as of right now. We are providing those three spaces on-site. I know during our last discussion, we mentioning that there's possibility to park off-street in that area, possibly on Prospect Heights. Daisy has spoken to some of the staff about being able to do so. She has also noted to me that between the hours of 7:30 and essentially 9:00 AM, there would only be two teachers on-site to handle any students coming in for drop-off, and then the other four teachers will be coming in from 9:00 through the rest of the afternoon. So at least in terms of when a major drop-off is going to be occurring, we will have majority of the spaces available, and then those teachers coming in in the afternoon, we could easily direct them to go to the off-street parking, or sorry, on-street parking, so that we can make sure that those spaces remain available for everybody. And then I did have a copy of the updated floor plans for you all. Top page is just the first floor plan, second page was for that second floor. Only difference between this version, the architectural version, much more simplified, and the classroom that was located on the second floor, one point was shown as two separate classrooms. They're going to be eliminating that wall, so it will be one larger classroom in there. Still no changes to overall student counts or anything for it, but we just at least wanted to provide a more clear picture of how that layout's going to look for everything.
Comments from the board?
The only problem I got is the ballards, you're going to need more ballards.
Okay.
The idea of the ballards is to stop a car. With two ballards, there's still room for a vehicle to get through, and...
I can definitely have an extra one or two added. I'm not sure if you have, like, a typical spacing for those that you would like to see?
Well, they got to be less than eight feet.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you do it, if you do it seven feet on center, you're fine.
Okay.
Seven feet, seven and a half, because that'll be less than seven on the spacing.
And they should be six-inch ballards, not...
Six-inch, okay. I love to call out generic for that, I don't know if that's anything we could have as a condition added. If we need to have it reflected on a plan, I'm more than happy to, to make sure that all that's addressed there.
We probably want the plan updated to show that, and to, and to indicate that call-out on it. I don't know that that stops us from approving the plan or not tonight, we can do that subject too. I don't think that's a, that's a killer. I mean, my other thing is, I think all, all of these, all the spaces should have signage, 10-minute parking. For those that are, are drop-off parking, they should all have a sign in front of them, so that when we get into that situation where, you know, we want to make sure the teachers aren't parking in there, or whatever, that those are, it's, everybody realizes those are 10-minute drop-offs only, and they need to park. As we said, on Prospect Heights, there is parking there available, it's not that far away, not on the street itself, but on the, on the turnout from 140 is probably more appropriate.
Okay.
But...
So a total of four signs, the three parking spaces and the striped space?
Yes, sure. Yep.
Not a problem. Since that area is kind of tight in the front, would the board be okay if those signs were located on the building, but still in front of that space?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's probably better that way, you, you maintain your handicap accessibility, you don't have, you don't have a post sitting in the middle of the aisle.
Okay, perfect.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion to approve with the update to the draft.
Motion to approve the amended site plan, subject to the addition of the additional ballards and the placement of signage to indicate the 10-minute drop-off parking. By Joe, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous at three.
Okay, great.
Thanks, and good luck.
Other than just like the extra one or two hard copies with the board, need anything additional on that end for that revision?
Just whatever Larry needs.
Yeah, add PDFs.
Sure thing. PDF.
Send the PDF over to me, I'll double-check and make sure I'm good with it, and then...
Okay. Great. All right, thank you so much, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CBA variance referral, Off Highland Street, sounds like, sounds like a department store. Jason Gomes, I'll read Larry's letter for the records. The applicant requests a variance from frontage and width requirements to allow for the division of the subject lot into two lots, each with, each for the construction of a single-family dwelling. Proposed lot split will result in two oversized buildable lots that will each comply with all applicable zoning requirements save for the lot with and frontage. Proposed Lot A will have 50.56 feet of frontage and 46.31 of width. Lot B will have 53.18 of frontage and 54.10 of width. Arby Zoning District requires 90 feet of frontage and 100 feet of width per lot. Current lot is the result of the recently approved definitive subdivision for Gomes Way. It is an overly large, buildable lot of an irregular shape with frontage on both Highland and Laurel Streets. Laurel Street is an unimproved public way that is unlikely to ever be constructed, and due to several access complications associated with that layout, it is also unlikely that it'll, it is also unlikely that it will be discontinued, if all Larry recommends are favorable to the ZBA.
Yeah, I included some graphics from the actual subdivision, as well as the plan that they submitted, so...
You want the GIS?
You got it? No, we got the GIS, it's effectively the, yeah, that section...
So this, the, the line for the subdivision cuts in here, something like this.
Yep. So it's, it's that area or south of that.
The lower, the lower section.
You could see Laurel Street.
This is one of the better, better things, we'll try to build on a, on a, the right-sized lot in the area, not trying to put something on a postage stamp.
Yep, and as you can see on the one subdivision plan, parcel A was the open space wetlands area that they've already deeded to the town.
Okay. That's a section out in the back. Sort of figured this was coming forward sooner or later when we did the subdivision.
It's got, it's like a, it's basically doing two retreat lots.
Yeah.
Which is in the zoning in some, in some towns.
So it's the garage? Garage must be coming down, huh?
Yes. Garage, that's coming down.
You don't miss that garage, I remember that for years.
When they first started the subdivision process, one of the alternatives was to...
This way and loop.
Get the lot split first, before they did the subdivision. But, you know, I'd, I'd recommended that they do the subdivision as they had done, to get the approval and get it cleared, and then if they decided not to split the lot, they had to build a lot. So they've done that, but now they're still going to attempt to split, which, in the whole scheme of things, given other things that have been approved, it seemed like it made sense.
Yeah.
And as I say, Laurel Street, the complications aren't so much on this end, in terms of the discontinuance, it's down on the other end, where it connects to 140. There are some other developments there that have access and share it, so it's, it's complicated.
It actually went that far out, huh? I didn't realize it, it connected into West Street. I knew it was there, but I didn't realize it went all the way out, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so...
Make a motion, we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Motion by Babe, send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, do I hear a second?
Second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at three. ZBA special permit referral, 286 and a half West Street, Ryan Morganelli. Applicant requests a special permit to allow for an automotive repair use on the subject property. Auto repaired uses are allowed in the ZBA district, or in the CC district by ZBA special permit. Existing 60 by 60, 3,600 square foot structure was originally approved as a warehouse use in 2002. Proposed auto repair use will be located in the naughtily bay of the two bays within the existing building. The repair use will be primarily for the applicant's vehicles. No additions to the structure are being proposed, however, the pavement and parking striping are no longer as previously approved. Final paving and parking configurations can be addressed at the required site plan reviewed by the planning board subsequent to the issuance of the special permit by the ZBA. My recommends are favorable, be forwarded to the ZBA, however, it should be noted that contractor yards, contractor yard uses are currently prohibited in the CC commercial zoning district. A zoning amendment is tentatively being considered for inclusion on the May town meeting that would provide for contractor yard uses by ZBA special permit.
Here's the full size, I think it's attached, but I unfounded that one.
Questions, comments from the board?
This is just going to be a self-use thing, evidently, that's what they...
Well, it seems predominantly that, yeah, but it wasn't necessarily exclusively that.
Right.
In fact, I was talking to this applicant as one of several people that had been asking about the contractor's yard uses in the commercial C-zone, and every site that the various people looked at, it couldn't be done, but it was in a commercial C-zone, which prompted that draft amendment that's being put through the process, so...
Yeah, so the usage isn't, you know, you just, you don't want them to turn, as of right now, we can't turn this into a contractor yard, you can repair vehicles, but that's as far as you can go. I guess, at this point in time, it should be made clear to them.
Well, that's why I...
Yeah, I know, that's why you put it in, I don't know that that ever, I won't go there. But yeah, I don't have, I don't have an issue with the, with the usage.
It's one bay too, so...
Yeah. Any other questions, comments from the board?
You want me to do it? I don't feel... Make a motion, we give, send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board.
Subject to Larry's letter. Subject to Larry's letter.
Yes.
Motion by Babe, send a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, subject to the comments by the town planner, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? Hearing not, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at three. ZBA special permit referral, 50 Birch Street, Ronald Gray. Read Larry's, his petition has submitted an incomplete application, the requested special permit is to establish an auto sales operation on the subject property, however, the materials provided are incomplete and do not include the required engineering site plan, although Although auto sales uses are provided for by ZBA special permit within the IB district, the ZBA application form in part specifically requires that applications must be accompanied by five copies of a current plan of the property or lot, prepared and signed by a certified civil engineer or registered land surveyor, which plans must set forth the position of all structures thereon, their size and distance from the front side and rear boundaries of the lot. Not only has no such plan been provided, the drawing that has been submitted is a misappropriation of a prior plan produced by others without their authorization. Therefore, I recommend this application. Be continued to afford the petition at time to hire an engineering firm to prepare a proper site plan as required. There's also a letter from Gary Aaron Hellman indicating, pretty much the same as what Larry said in terms of the use of the plan that was used, that there have been changes made to their plan that they had and that they didn't release any, any usage of that plan to the party involved. Before I, before I open it up, the applicant is here, I believe, they may wanna speak. Normally, we don't really go into much, this is only an advisory. Liz, did you, were you the one to try to mark down the issues on the back sheet, or is this, that's from the applicant?
I did go out to the, I did take the existing conditions plan, I went out to the site, and everything seemed representative of what is out there. The, there were a few things that I had let the applicant know about, and the property owner as well, that when, if this comes back through for site plan review, there's a few minor things, adding signage for the handicap parking spaces. And that front driveway really should be a one-way, because it's not wide enough on the easterly side to accommodate two-way traffic, so, but definitely minor stuff that can be addressed in site plan review, but that was...
Well, I mean, to try to head off some of the issues here, when it comes back for site plan review, we're gonna require an engineered copy, so you're gonna need to get an engineer to prepare that plan. We need to have plans in-house to represent what's gonna be out there when we, when we do that, so I'm not sure where we end up going with this, or where you wanna go with this, but there is gonna be...
I submitted five sets of plans. Is that, I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
No, I'm asking for an engineered plan by an engineer that's stamped, that, as Liz indicated, there were comments, those comments done in red are not gonna be sufficient for us. We need, we need something that we can reproduce, that we have, that we have the ability to have in the office, that we can use. That's gonna have to come, and that's stamped by an engineer that says, yes, this is, this is what's done. So whether, I would assume the zoning board's gonna tell you they want a plan stamped by an engineer. You don't have that now, but that's up to them.
I tried, yeah, I tried to do that, it was rejected the first time.
I don't think you did, but I'm not gonna get into that.
Okay.
Well, I've got a letter from an engineer that said you used their plans and you didn't, that, that something was put there, so, I mean, the, I won't get into that, that's, that's, yeah, I don't, I don't know that, but anyways, it, to come back to here for site plan, we're going to need that as part of that, and it's gonna have to be done by, you know, by a registered engineer. Liz has, Liz has done half the work already for what's gonna need to be done, but it's not staff's responsibility to do that, nor do we want staff, you know, staff to be doing that, although she's gone through that, but we need to have somebody, we need to have somebody outside that does that and says, okay, this is what's out there, this is what's being done. So she's, she's provided that a level of work, but we will need a plan for that. But in terms of the recommendation to ZBA, you know, that's, that's a entirely different, that, at the end of the day, that's gonna be their, their call as to what they will accept or not accept. We have no control over that. As Larry indicated, he's, he's reading from something that ZBA has established for everybody that comes in. This is what we need, this is what the plans need to be, this is what, and, and they, they require that to act on any of this first special permits. Whether they waive that or not, for whatever reasons or not, I can't tell you. That's, that's truly within their, their purview, but considering that they told the town planner that they didn't wanna see a package unless it had all these things, it may be a tough road to hoe, but again, they'll make that decision. Any questions, comments from the board?
Again, we, everyone else who's done, goes for a special permit, has to go through, has paid for the plan to be stamped, and I see no reason why it shouldn't be. That's in the rules and regulations that we follow and...
Yeah, I have stamped plans.
Don't you have, does, he had, he had submitted the stamped plans?
I have stamped ASBIL plans with no...
I did, well...
That's not, that's...
ASBIL, ASBIL plans, the ASBIL plans that you submitted, my understanding, were, were taken from this plan and somebody added some stuff on it.
Incorrect.
So the, there, they submitted two plans. One was the one with the red and had the notes on it. The other one was the exact stamped ASBIL plan that came from, that was, that GNH produced for conservation. No alterations made to that plan, to the ASBIL plan, so the...
Stupla.
It's an ASBIL plan.
That's right, it's two separate plans, and that's not the one we want.
One, so the ASBIL plan, yes, the existing conditions ASBIL plan...
Nothing's changed.
Is accurate, and it's stamped by, by a professional, by GNH professional engineer. But the plan that's showing the proposed is not stamped and is not...
Okay.
Which is a sign.
And is the alter.
Whatever, whatever, whatever plan is needed, that plan, which is gonna probably look something like this...
Well, exactly like that, yeah.
But it needs to be stamped and signed by a, by a professional engineer.
What you submit?
Submitted that the first time, it was rejected.
So that plan was an altered version, and that it has already been discussed at length, that that's not acceptable.
Yeah, you can't, you can't take someone else's plan, add something to it, and use that.
To stamp.
Well, actually, the law said you can if you work in conjunction, and GNH didn't want it.
I'm not gonna get into the legalities of it or not. Well, if GNH doesn't want to, they have the right to, the, the, the plan wasn't, if it were, if it were the owner of the property, and he gave it to somebody to use, and he did the thing, he has the right to that plan, but other than him, and I think it said that in the GNH letter, other than him, and the owner of the property, and them, GNH, those are the only people that can use the plan.
So you're telling me that the owner of the plan, the owner of the plan presently, who owns the property, can take that plan and have it changed?
No.
No.
You can't change, you cannot...
He can use, I believe he can use the plan, but he has to get, he's still there.
Use the plan, yes.
Yes.
That's, so submitting the ASBIL plan from GNH, that you can do, because you did get that plan from the property owner, so that's, that's completely legal. The problem is that, what they're saying is that even, even if ZBA allows you to move forward with what you've submitted...
Right.
Which makes some sense, because you're, it's...
Nothing's changed.
But, you, but when you come back to this board, you are gonna be proposing changes, granted, they're relatively minor, but they are, you are gonna be proposing changes, and those changes need to be a stamped plan, and they cannot be a GNH, if, if it's a GNH plan, it needs to be stamped by a GNH person, and it can't be altered.
And by the way, the plan that you submitted is an ASBIL, is an old ASBIL plan for conservation. It has no land use references on it at all. It barely has any dimensions on it, and it doesn't talk about any of the stuff that relates to getting a special permit and meeting zoning requirements for the ZBA, let alone for this board when it comes back for amended site plan.
Which, that can be, in all honesty, that, that can make it complicated for the, for the people that are reviewing it to relate the information that's being proposed, which is on one plan, and the ASBIL information on another plan. So it's, it's not, it's out of the normal process, and, and it can be confusing.
What's the motion, we...
We can send a, we can send a recommendation, I mean, again, this is gonna be ZBA's call at the end of the day. We can send a...
Right. I would say that it makes sense to make a recommendation based on the use.
Use.
Because they're...
Yeah, whatever the ZBA, whatever the ZBA wants, the use, as far as we're concerned, we can send a favorable to ZBA for the usage, however, whatever they need in order to approve it, they, the applicant will need to, will need to abide by.
Do we, again...
I mean, I don't, I'm not...
Do we wanna continue it, or...
No, we can't continue it, because they're gonna meet it anyway, so, so what I think we need to tell the ZBA is, do we have an issue with the use? I don't have an issue with the use. Whatever they want for plans, at the end of the day, is gonna be the ZBA's, the ZBA's call. That's where I would go with it at this point. We can't tell them to, to ask for a continuation or not. It's their meeting that becomes critical in terms of time.
Yeah, in that context, you, you could say favorable as to use only.
Yeah.
Okay, I make a, I make a motion, we send a favorable recommendation for use only of the property.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous at three. So you have to go to the ZBA, I don't know what they're gonna tell you. When you do come back to us, you're gonna need a site plan that shows the, at a minimum, and I have no idea, the zoning, the ZBA could ask for other things, for all I know, or not, but, but at a minimum, the things that are on here are chances are things that the planning board is gonna wanna see on a stamped new plan. It's called out as a site plan that says, this is, this is what's there, this is what we're gonna change. Even if it's just a single sign, we need to have that done on a stamped plan. It can't be, it can't be a plan submitted by, by anybody, it needs to be by a, by a registered engineer. There's, there's no way we can accept that, because we get into, once we, once we go down that rabbit hole, where it ends, we don't know.
I, we understand that, and with all best intentions, we had, we had other engineers looking at it. It, you know, it was...
Okay.
Someone would have looked at it, stamped.
There was another engineer, it just wasn't an acceptable engineer, so...
It wasn't that the engineer wasn't acceptable. It was, it was that the engineer that stamped that plan did not produce that plan.
Yeah, he used...
And that's, that's a legal and, it's definitely an ethical concern, and, and...
Yeah, I explained that to you in my office several times, that you can't take a print, you can't take a print from one engineering firm and make changes... I'm speaking, you can't steal...
All right, all right, all right, wait a minute, wait a minute.
This is definitely personalized at this point with him.
And you put, and you put a wet stamp.
I'm listening to Liz, I'm listening to Liz, what she has to offer.
That guy can lose his stamp over wet stamping that modified plan.
What is it that you are, can you say?
What, what the issue, my understanding of what the issue is, I'll try to, I'll try to get in the middle of this. What I, my understanding of the issue was, is that somebody took a plan that looked exactly like someone else's plan, and added some stuff on it, and said, this is what they had. That presents a, a legal and ethical issue, when it looks like that plan is in fact someone else's plans that someone added, and they're not saying that this is actually what's out there, they're just taking someone else's plans. That's what it, that's what it, that's what it, while walking it, walking it and preparing an engineered plan, but I'm not, I'm not gonna get in the middle of it, because, because it doesn't get anybody anywhere. It, you've got, you've got an engineering firm that believes somebody did that, so it would be who, somebody to produce a plan, because...
That's not really even part of this discussion.
It, it is if that, if the plan that you're using is their basis, because they're going to look at it and say, hey, wait a minute, but that's, that's between you, the app, the owner, and this firm, because if it comes back and it looks like that, and they, they end up suing your engineer, you're gonna be stuck with nowhere, you know, and it's not gonna get anybody anywhere. So, so I, you know, I suggest that whoever does your engineered plan, when they do it, it doesn't look, doesn't look very much like this one, per se. Obviously, it looks, it has to, in a certain sense, if that's the ASBIL, it has to look exactly the same, but, but I saw the plan, and I looked at it and said, that's this plan with some, with some added data on it, so I could see...
Well, you presented you had no stamp at all, when I presented you just had my changes.
Yep.
Which from what I understood, were really supposed to not even, they were already supposed to have been done, but, but it's here, and this is where we're at, and that's okay.
So anyway, I, those are the issues that you got coming up, that you just, you need to, you need to figure out and address.
Change here, so, okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Good night everyone.
All right. Anybody got anything else?
No, I wanna buy a used car.
Yeah. Would that obtain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Joe to adjourn, seconded by Babe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous at three.